Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, August 7, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Berman, who's been excused. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, on its foundation, on its ground, in its service, in its justice.
Thank you very much. Under General, this evening, we have two items. Item A is the Harbor Fest proclamation. City of Saco Office of the Mayor, August 13th, Camp Ellis Harbor Fest Day. Whereas Camp Ellis is a working waterfront that employs many local residents and attracts many tourists and locals who enjoy its beaches, water sports, charter boats for sailing and fishing, and delicious food. Whereas over the years, Camp Ellis Beach has been significantly altered by erosion, ongoing efforts in place are in place to bring back the beautiful beach that has been lost. And whereas the city of Saco will be hosting Harbor Fest, a locally grown community festival celebrating the working waterfront and the rebuilding effort to bring the beach back. And whereas Harbor Fest will start on Saturday, August 12th, with fireworks, followed by a full day of family-friendly activities on Sunday, including games for children, food trucks, crafters, and live music. And whereas, community members are encouraged to participate in Harbor Fest to reminisce about Camp Ellis's rich history and celebrate the bright future ahead for its businesses, residents, and visitors. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, Maine, do hereby proclaim August 13, 2023, as Harbor Fest Day. Sign this the 7th day of August, 2023, by the mayor of the city of Saco. Thank you and congratulations to everyone that worked on the Camp Ellis Harbor Fest Day. I believe it's going to be a great time for everybody. Next up on the agenda is the Spirit of America proclamation, City of Saco Office of the Mayor proclamation. The 2023 Maine Spirit of America Foundation tribute honors Danielle Villamere, George Chase, Lawrence Patterson, Carol Patterson, Joseph Corview, Susan Marston, Claudette Nato, Gloria Marquis, Margaret Mills, Elizabeth DeSimone, Anita Huizing, and Marjorie Sandborn for their dedication to the election process and vital services they perform. Be it resolved by the City of Saco Council as follows, whereas elections are the foundation of our democracy, whereas duties of an election worker may include supervision of incoming voter list, overseeing the ballot box, ensuring compliance with laws pertaining to voting and counting of ballots, assist in the warding and ward clerk as needed, attendance at the voting place while the polls are open and/or during the counting of the ballots after the polls close, setting up and operation of the state's accessible voting system, AVS, and tabulators, and any other duties at the warden's or clerk's request. And whereas Daniel, George, Lawrence, Carol, Joseph, Susan, Claudette, Gloria, Margaret, Elizabeth, Anita, and Marjorie have worked as election workers tirelessly for 10 years or more to ensure the election process runs smoothly, to provide a check and balance, and to maintain public confidence in the outcome of the election process. And whereas, special recognition goes out to Marjorie Sandborn, who has been an election worker for the past 51 years, five one-years. Now therefore, I, William P. Doyle, Mayor of the City of Saco and the Saco City Council, hereby recognize Daniel, George, Lawrence, Carol, Joseph, Susan, Claudette, Gloria, Margaret, Elizabeth, Anita, and Marjorie for their outstanding achievements and are awarded the 2023 Maine Spirit of America Foundation Tribute. You truly show your dedication to the City of Saco and the election process, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Saco this 7th day of August, 2023. Thank you for that. Something that was mentioned at the end of last meeting, but just a kind of a reminder that due to some traffic, engineering studies that have not returned, the school bond will not be in this year's referendum, will not be in this year's referendum. Moving on to item five, committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondence at this time? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I have two committees to report back on. The first is the Historic Preservation Commission. They are embarking on a Saco community history project, which will include certain placement of plaques along Main Street in locations of historic significance. That project begins tomorrow with some videotaping, so if you see folks around Main Street engaging in that activity, that is the reason why. And we're all looking forward to a very successful and informative conclusion to that project. It's very exciting. And then the couple of items for the Energy and Sustainability Committee. The Saco Climate Adaptation and Action Plan Survey will be distributed on or around August 16th. We're encouraging as many people from the community to complete the survey, and we hope to be able to use that information to help guide us in our future plans. The second issue is simply a shout-out. I get to attend these committee meetings once a month, and Don Roth, who handles our facilities maintenance, is always a fascinating story to listen to. He talks about the care, loving care he and the staff have to give to some of our aging properties, how difficult that can be at times. And I just wanted to give Don a shout-out. He kind of talks like it's his own property, and I think that's a testimony to his dedication to his role. So thank you, Don, for all that hard work.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondence at this time? Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the public that on Monday, August 14th, the week from now, the planning department is hosting an information session giving an overview of LD 2003 housing ordinance revisions as they go through the planning board and council process. The purpose of this ordinance revision is to comply with the state of Maine's LD 2003 law, which will become effective on January 1st of 2024. As a reminder, the LD 2003 has three primary components rooted in Saco's, in the state's overall goal of increasing affordability and housing variety throughout Maine. These three components are, one, the right to add dwelling units where single-family homes are allowed, two, provisions about accessory dwelling units, and three, affordable housing density bonuses for affordable housing developments. The event will be here in the auditorium at 5:30 PM next Monday. You can attend in person and, of course, watch online on Facebook. And I encourage any and everybody who has questions, concerns, or any thoughts whatsoever about the process to come down, because it is the law of the land, it is something we have to deal with, and it is something that, if we're proactive about it, can be to the benefit of the city. But information is the key to getting everybody on board, so we hope to see you here or virtually online.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondence? Moving on from committee correspondence to item six, public comment. If there's any member of the public would like to address the council, please come forward With nobody seeking recognition, we will move on from public comment. Just so the council is aware, we did receive a letter that somebody wanted to read into the record but couldn't be here tonight. We will include it in the documents. I believe you all got a copy of it via email. If not, city, interim city administrator, Duras, can forward that out. But we did receive a public comment, but it will be put into the agenda packet online. With that, moving on to approval of the minutes for July 24, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Johnston, any discussion on the minutes? Roll call on the minutes. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to approve the minutes. Brings us to item eight, and that's consent agenda. And that is, there are four things on the consent agenda tonight. One, item A is Historic Preservation Commission reappointment of Thomas Hardy. Item B is Historic Preservation Commission appointment for Angie Presby. Item C is to approve the September, October, and November council dates. And item D is solid waste permit, triano waste services. Is there anything anybody wants to take off the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor McPhail, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. That brings us to item nine, action items. We have five items on the agenda tonight. Item A on page 11 is one reading to amend the fiscal year 2024 property tax due dates and interest rates assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Council has expressed the need to delay commitment in order to workshop the return of TIF funds for the fiscal year 2024 budget process. This motion delays the first half tax due dates. The tax payment due dates are as follows. First half due, 10/13/23, interest accruing from 10/16/23. The second half due, 3/8/24, interest accruing from 3/11/24. An amendment to easy pay due date, continuation of the easy pay program for the fiscal year 2024, with eight monthly payments starting October 15, 2023, and ending May 15, 2024. Be it ordered that payment for the first half taxes be due on October 13, 2023, with interest occurring from October 16, 2023, and payment for the second half due on March 8, 2024, with interest accruing from March 11, 2024. Easy pay plans shall now be due in eight monthly payments from October 15, 2023 to May 15, 2024. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Item B and C were items that did not make it through last time. Is there any motion to reconsider these items? Hearing no motion to reconsider item B, we'll move on to item C. Any motion to reconsider? Hearing no motion to reconsider, moving on from item C. Item D was a first reading on a charter amendment, number one, proposed charter change, section 2.07, powers and duty of the mayor. However, due to not being properly formatted, it will be pushed to the next council agenda. Therefore, it brings us to item E, which is one reading on page 20 in your packet. It's the fiscal year 2024 TIF budget reallocation and purchase approval assigned to Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council has approved purchase of 142 Main Street to expand downtown parking for $150,000. This motion repurposes existing funds for the purchase from the Economic Development Funds and the downtown TIF. Be it ordered the city council approve the use of $100,000 from the 77 industrial park TIF and $125,000 from the downtown TIF previously approved for business loans to be used instead for the purchase of 142 Main Street, and furthermore, that $225,000 from the Economic Development Fund be used to pay the balance of the purchase price of $140,000, $450,000, excuse me. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. I think I, had we had motions on the prior items, I probably would have touched upon this then, but I guess, given that we have a rather lengthy legal opinion by the city's legal counsel, which I definitely pulled from, at least again, his opinion, that all transfers or reallocations of TIFs or any appropriation order whatsoever is a budget amendment, I'm just curious, is that accurate? Is this a budget amendment? Does it need five affirmative votes to move, or in the case tonight, we don't have full council, so four or a supermajority votes to approve this? And additionally, if that is the case, why did this not follow the two-meeting process that all other budget appropriations follow?
City Solicitor Murphy, could you come up to the podium, please? City Solicitor Murphy, did you hear Counselor Johnston's question?
I couldn't catch all of it in the back, but...
I believe the question is, the item before us, is it an allocation that requires five affirmative votes?
Yeah, so the charter is pretty clear that a transfer or allocation of funds is not done by a majority vote or even a supermajority vote. It's a, requires five votes. It requires five affirmative votes to move funds, so...
That is how I interpreted your opinion on separate matter. My question on that is, you confirming that this is a, in fact, an appropriation order?
Yeah.
Doesn't this then need to follow the process of two meetings and not just be approved tonight? This is the first we've read this into the record.
No one asked me to look at that, Counselor, what the sequencing of the votes should be. The issue that was handed to me was, how many votes are needed in such and such circumstance? Initially, starting with the question, is this a transfer? Yes, it is. And then if so, how many votes are needed? Off the top of my head, orders can be done in one night. They're not, my memory is they're not two-night, two-order, but I'd want to go back and look at that.
I believe in the charter. It states with an appropriation order, it's a two-meeting process, something we've always followed. Here tonight...
It could well be.
Here tonight, we are, again, moving money around, which, based on your opinion, that's an appropriation order, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Regardless of whether it's in a TIF account, we're moving it from one TIF account to another...
Absolutely.
That is an appropriation.
Yeah, because the earlier questions that this arose in was in the context of a TIF transfer.
And I agree, and I'm not trying to grill you, I'm trying to get to the crux of the matter that has existed for as long as I've been on council. It's been viewed differently. And, you know, for once and for all, I'm hearing you state that pretty much any transfer of funds is an appropriation order that needs council approval.
It's the most reasonable reading and understanding of those words. I mean, there are lots of orders you make, but when they come down to moving money from one line to another, from one account to another, it's hard to argue those aren't appropriation orders.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just, I think that, again, this is probably going to create many headaches going forward, but I appreciate you confirming how I always felt previously. It's just now we have it in writing. Thank you.
Sure.
Any, Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, are we allowed to vote on this? And I'm going to use the last, we were unable to look at item D because of a formatting issue. If you look at this item, all it states is this motion repurposes existing funds for the purchase of economic development funds and the, there's nothing. It stops at the word "the." Counselor Johnston added some things, which it's very similar to why we just weren't able to issue item D, so are we allowed to look at item E because it's not fully formatted correctly?
Again, I haven't seen this item.
I just read it word for word. It stops at the word "the."
Yeah, it would be helpful if there were more information in it. It appears to be a request to move money from the TIFs to purchase real estate in Saco.
Yeah, I understand the context.
That was, that was based on a two-second read.
We didn't look at a formatting issue because of ADA, because we didn't put in underlines or strike-throughs, and here, we don't even have the words, but we're debating it.
No, I don't want to debate the ADA matter.
That's okay, but we just, for similar reasons, formatting issue, we just did not look at D, formatting issue, we're considering E, which is very similar when the context is formatted.
The question was, is it an appro- The question was, is it an appropriation order?
Nope, my question is different. I'm not talking about Council Johnson's. I'm talking about what I just stated, that we have a formatting difference here, but we're debating this one. And again, the context and how I feel about it are two different things. I'm actually going to approve it. That's not my concern. But why are we debating it now, using the same, we'll call it nexus of the two? They're very similar, but we're looking at them differently.
Counselor- Counselor Archer, I believe you're looking at the last sentence of the background. The background is just background to provide folks with an idea of why we're doing what we're doing. And it says, this motion repurposes existing funds for the purchase from economic development funds and the, and the is probably a typo because copy and paste.
And so isn't forgetting a strike-through.
But that's not, but that's not what you're approving. You're approving the secondary piece of paper.
So why didn't Council Johnson get a chance to at least amend the suggested motion? It was completely bypassed, and this one's not. That's my difference. I'm ready to move forward.
The formatting error, Counselor Archer, was actually on the document that you would be actually approving, not the background for informational purposes only. Counselor Gunn.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but going back to the point that Counselor Archer made about Council Johnson's amendment that we had to skip over, and, you know, cognizant of the fact that we're on a timetable, obviously, you know, for any charter amendments, would have not been possible to, when Counselor Johnson, if he had read his amendment into the record, offered his own friendly amendment for strike-through language, would that have been a possibility? I mean, I'm just, again, I'm trying to bring some clarity to this, so we don't get all caught up in the weeds here.
The answer is no.
If you don't mind me asking, how come?
It's a formatting issue. It's not as simple as saying, we're going to strike through this or strike through that. It's actually going through, and Tim can opine on how this is done, and it, as I understand it, it's done at the state level, at the local level. You have to have strike-throughs of language you're looking to remove, and you have to have a clear version of what you're trying to put in, and Tim-
Yep. So any, for instance, any city ordinance, our charter, state laws, the main legislature does the same thing. When you're amending existing laws, the standard practice is to strike what's being deleted and underline the new material. It's not about ADA, it's just the consistent practice that's always been followed, so that the public can read in the document what is being kept and what is being removed. I think counselors, this particular item commentary, I didn't know about it, I wasn't asked to read it, so I'm kind of caught off guard by Counselor Archer's inquiry, but it's not the same.
So if I'm following you correctly, Mr. Murphy, is if we can add and subtract language to our heart's content, though, but if it's pre-existing language, it has to have that format, otherwise we can't touch it.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't take it up because it's not underlined.
Right, so that's perfectly clear.
It's-
And, oh, good.
But the item commentary sheets that you're looking at are designed to be informative to the public and to the fellow counselors as to what you're doing. The omission of some words is not fatal to, you're working tonight on a particular matter. It might be helpful if everything was there, or maybe that staff simply ran out of time and didn't link up that last bit. We won't know. But it's not a, it's not a procedural bar to acting tonight, would be my opinion.
Absolutely. Thank you for your help on that.
Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. So again, going back to my original point on this, Article II, Mayor and City Council, section 2.08, procedure numbers, or letter C, voting. Voting except on procedural motions shall be open, roll call, and the yays and nays shall be recorded in the journal. Four members of the city council shall constitute a quorum, but a smaller number may adjourn from time to time. No action of the city council except for adjournment shall be binding or valid unless adopted by the affirmative vote of four or more members of the city council. No ordinance and no appropriation order or resolve other than emergency action shall be passed until it has been read on two separate days, at least seven days apart. So, back to the original point, it seems like this would be a first reading, and we would have to have a second reading on the 21st.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. That's, that's easy enough to do. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item 10, New Business. On page 22, you have item A is Chapter 230, Article 12, Stormwater and Erosion Control Proposed Ordinance Amendments. Counselor Gunn, you've been assigned this. Are you okay with staying on as the liaison? Great, thank you. And I believe we're going to hear from Staff Resource Assembly Call Prescott, the city planner, and Joel Laverrier, the city engineer.
Thank you. Public Works and Planning have been collaborating on all different items, all different projects. One of the things that was flagged to us by Public Works was the fact that our ordinance revision process, Article 12, left out a couple of items and didn't cross-reference as well as it could have other ordinance sections, as well as our Technical Design Construction Standards Manual. These items are really relevant to compliance and how we follow up with people when they're out of compliance, and I'll let Joel Laverrier speak a little more to that here as well. So, these are relatively minor amendments in nature, needed for compliance with our MS-4 permitting requirements. Should be noted that we're collaborating, like I said, on several things, so we'll be back in front of you on other amendments going forward for other items, but this was a time pressing one, so. Joe, anything to add?
The only thing I would add is the, the real crux of the change is, it's in section, it's 230, 12, 4, and then it's A, 4, B. So it's the section that talks, where it strikes out repair. It started with that, and it talks about repairing deficiencies in stormwater management in essentially a 60-day period that's been, that's required under the MS-4 permit, so that was something that was to be added to our ordinance. That's really the most significant item that we're trying to get included. The rest, as Emily said, is really just a couple of cross-references that would be good to have, and we also added some references to the Technical Design Manual that the city's got, which talks about proper inspection and maintenance of stormwater facilities as well, so that's all I'd have to add for you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I did focus in on 1204, so I appreciate the addition of the deficiency language. I think it's very strong, it's very good. I continue to have some concerns, however, about, it's one thing to acknowledge a deficiency, it's another thing to make sure that it gets remediated, and if not remediated by the property owner, rights to the, to the city to actually complete the remediation and recover all costs associated with that from the landowner. And I, and I can be corrected on this, but I don't, I don't think I see that type of language in the document, so I think we need to, we need to consider creating some way, some mechanism by which we can, as a municipality, complete the required repairs and then recapture the funds necessary to do that from the landowner, and whether that's, in my mind, I'm just thinking of a, a property lien right, to be able to do that. I think, I want to avoid the situation where, you know, we recognize as deficiencies, we recognize that maintenance has not been done, we've alerted the property owner, they do nothing, and we have a problem that perpetuates itself. And I think in the case of stormwater drainage, we run the risk of abutting property owners suffering as a result, and I suspect that the first department they're going to call is Public Works. So I just think we need to have more strength in the enforcement. I don't have the language for you, I don't have, you know, other than what I've just described to you as a suggestion, but I would really like us to build into this document that kind of opportunity and ability, you know, easement access, access, I think, is mentioned in the document, but, but it's this cost that I don't want the taxpayers to have to bear the brunt of fixing a problem that should have been resolved by the property owner themselves, okay?
Understood.
Okay.
Any further questions, discussion, comments? Thank you very much. Counsel, you'll see this at an upcoming council meeting at some point. That concludes New Business. That brings us to item 11, Administrative Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two or three items here, and some of them have already been talked about, but first, for National Night Out, a special thank you to the Saco Police Department and the various city departments that assisted in hosting National Night Out on Tuesday, August 1. The event was a, had a very large turnout, with people enjoying many activities and food. A lot of effort and planning and volunteer hours went into making this event a huge success, and it surely will continue to grow for many years. A little bit more on Harbor Fest in Camp Ellis. There are fireworks on Saturday, August 12, beginning at approximately 8:30. The festival continues on Sunday, the 13th, with more food and events. We hope that everyone has a chance to attend. For more event details, you can go to the community page on sacomaine.org. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I have just two items. First of all, I see that we're doing a live Facebook streaming of the LD 2003 session on Monday, which is fabulous, but I'd like to know if we are going to continue to use that mechanism in future planning board meetings. I've had a significant number of constituents asking me when that was going to happen, and I just want to be able to give them an answer, and it sounds like we're ready, so I don't know what would stop us.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Hatch's question, I believe that the last planning board meeting was, excuse me, livestreamed on Facebook. I know the format's a little bit different in terms of where the cameras are, though, but I believe that the first one was up, excuse me, last week when we actually did meet, so it appears that it's already up and running.
Great. Then I, hopefully that's the case, and that'll satisfy the questions that I've been getting from constituents. And then the last quick item, Mayor Doyle, is the understanding that we're not going to referendum in November for the school project. I don't know if we've got on our radar screen a joint meeting, so the council and public can get updated on that, and if that's in the works, then that's all I'll indicate.
There will be a joint meeting in September per the charter.
Okay.
And I don't know if they're going to have an update at that time from the traffic and traffic study.
Maybe it's just a general reasoning as to why, so the public and council can be aware of where we are, so that's, that's just general.
Fair enough. Any further council discussion and comment this evening? Moving on to item 13, executive session. Is there a motion for executive session? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6E, consultation with attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor McFail, any discussion? Roll call to go into executive session, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to go into executive session at 7:05, and we'll be upstairs in the city administrator's conference room.
Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Purdy, any discussion? Roll call to exit. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at eight twenty-two. Item fourteen, report from executive session. There's no report this evening. And that brings us to item fifty, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch is our second.
Second.
Counselor McPhail, any discussion? Roll call. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at eight twenty-three. Have a good evening everyone.